Good evening. Four members, Mr. Santos and staff. The time is 6:04 PM on this fifteenth day of October 2014. And I call this meeting of the United Penney School District Board prestigious to order. Mr. Rodriguez, please call.
Jeff Gelfen.
President.
Ricardo Molina.
Present.
Ramiro Villas III.
Present.
Ricardo Rico Rodriguez.
Present.
Roberto Ramirez, present.
We have a conference.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez, thank you. Colero, everyone, please could rise for the place of allegiance. Thanks, please. A moment in silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as God.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one individual.
Thank you, here we see. For everyone, please, excuse me, let everyone show that a quorum of board members is present, that the meeting has been duly called, that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open's meeting plan. Agenda item three, four announcements. At this time, I would allow the board members to make an announcement that will wish for the four employees to hear which can be addressed in the necessary further four meetings.
I have a quick announcement, Mr. Vice President. I would like to publicly acknowledge and recognize our principles, being that it's a national principle month.
Of course.
And I would like to publicly thank them for their dedication and the work that they put in, day in and day out, at our different schools.
Thank you, Mr. Villas. Agenda number four, seat of Laredo Proposition One and Two on November ballot.
Yes, Mr. Ramirez, members of the board, tonight, we have two city council members and one city staff that will present to the board the seat of Laredo Proposition One and Two on the November ballot. One of the things that I wanted to share with the board and obviously share with the public, as you look at the two propositions, I think what our voters should look at is that really there's no tax increase at all, which is extremely important. And the other item is this allows our community to be able to look at other things that we don't have for both our youth and our citizens. So it's something that two city councilmen will present and then we'll let the board make some comments on that. So, Vela?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share this project that we're excited about. And basically, we just want to come out here and share the facts as to what exactly both propositions are about. As you can see here, we will be going out for a referendum. This is the schedule of our elections. It's going to be on your November ballot, election day is November 4th. And again, it's two separate propositions. The first proposition is the sports complex and the second proposition would be the auditorium. The sports complex, we're teaming up with Tami U University. And it consists of sixteen baseball fields and twenty-one tennis courts. And the idea behind it is obviously to be able to cater to baseball tournaments and tennis tournaments as well and be able to attract people that wouldn't normally come to the city of Laredo. And obviously, there's a stigma out there amongst the state and the country. And I think if we're able to put these facilities to use and have people come down here, it'll give us an opportunity to put our best foot forward and let them see what Laredo is truly about. And of course, increase our sales tax and motel taxes. Being able to use this and parlaying it into an actual revenue stream is a hidden gem. And logistically, it makes a lot of sense. Tami U is in a very desirable part of town. And also, Tami U, it'll allow them to be able to show their campus to people that wouldn't otherwise have campus. As you can see here, these are the details of the sports complex. Have the sixteen baseball fields and the twenty-one tennis courts, parking amenities. The total project costs to be twenty-five million dollars. Now, ten of that, twenty-five mil, is going to be from Tami U in the form of a land donation. They're donating a hundred acres of land. And then fifteen million dollars will be coming from us. Some of that will be from the sale of the civic center and some will be from the sports venue tax. Now, the sports venue tax is a tax that is built into our sales tax. As you all know, sales tax is at eight and a quarter here in Laredo. Six percent of that goes to the state, the nine share, and then one percent to the city of Laredo and one percent to the county. That quarter percent is the money that funds the sports venue tax. Right now, we have about, I think it's about fifteen million dollars in there? We have about fifteen million dollars in reserves right there in the sports venue. And it flows about eight million dollars a year. Now, when we first created this tax, it was probably bringing in about five million dollars a year. So as the city has grown, as our economy has grown, more money has flown into those coffers. But right now, it's eight million dollars. Hopefully, in the future, it'll continue to increase or will continue to increase. We have the same tax that we used to build the arena and Union Trade Stadium. And we have about thirty million dollars in obligated bonds right now, so the tax won't be going anywhere anytime soon. And there's about half of that we're using it for debt services. Plenty of room to be able to sell additional bonds. It's a beautiful facility. And again, it's going to give us an opportunity to be able to give our children a place to live or a place to play sports and showcase their abilities and compete at a high level. And again, it'll allow the city of Laredo to bring in added people. This is the proposition that you see, and this is the proposition number one. This is the sports complex. We did break them into two different propositions. And it's basically just asking the people to allow us to use that money. Again, it is not an additional tax. Whether or not the people allow us to use this money, that money's going to continue to flow. That fourteen million dollars will continue to grow. And again, it's just an opportunity for us to ask the voters for permission to use that money. This is a great way for us to invest that money in our community, in our children, in the future. And again, it's going to increase our tax revenue via sales tax and hotel motel. So, and then the next one is the auditorium. As you all know, we're teaming up with UISD, and this is going to be located at the SAC. This is just like the sports complex, is an amenity that will allow us to attract swimming meets. And the same concept goes behind it. We're looking at, I believe it's ten to twelve, auditorium, but at least twenty-five meters. We've talked about maybe fifty meters as well. I think that all of that will be determined once hopefully this referendum goes through and we really start getting into the metered project. And again, it's just a desirable location with a great entity. And the M&amp;O is one that I think is really going to be the hidden gem and why we're asking to go into the sports venue, because it'll allow us to go into that revenue stream to not only help pay for this, this project's going to be ten million dollars, the majority coming from UISD and then three million coming from us. But again, because we're going into sports venue tax, it's going to allow us to use that revenue stream for maintenance and operations, which is important because that means we're not going to have to go into our general fund. And as you know, as we start going into our general fund, it creates problems during the budget. So this is a great, great project that is very much needed for the school district in the city of Laredo. And again, it's going to be a project that is going to attract money and attract foot traffic to the city of Laredo. And it's going to be a great amenity for the school district and a growing school district. The proposition is very much the same, worded very much the same, just asking the people for permission to use, tap into the sports venue tax. You know, we ask that school board supports it, just like we supported the four-hundred-and-six million dollar bond openly in the city council, and hopefully the people of Laredo will support it as well. Councilman, do you have anything to add?
Again, for the purposes of the public that's watching tonight, the big key here is there's no new tax. All we're doing is diverting the current funding that's coming to a certain area of town, which is the arena area, and diverting that funding to be able to go to two different locations, which by the way, are also governmental entities. So it's a good bet that, you know, those are going to be invested wisely and have the opportunity to be able to do other projects in the future, not just specific to these particular projects. As you see here on the ballot, one of the important things here is since it is a proposition, it'll be towards the end of the large ballot that's going to be there in November. So please don't forget to turn the pages to get to that portion of the ballot to be able to vote on these propositions. It's a simple yes or no vote. And again, no new taxes. As you know, we have an eight and a quarter cent tax rate here locally, and a quarter of that was voted on by the voters many years ago to have the arena built, and it has since expanded to the area of the arena. So now, we're just going to designate two more areas. In addition to that, the real reason the city's getting involved with both projects is for us, it's an economic development engine. We're going to be able to bring people in from other parts of the state, all the parts of the country. And guess what's going to happen? They're going to stay here multiple nights, they're going to spend a lot of money in our community, they're going to eat here, they're going to sleep here, they're going to spend their money here and get entertained here. So that's one of our biggest advantages as far as the city's getting involved to be able to provide that. And then finally, of course, Mr. Gelfen was there when the UISD was able to present the school bond election at the city council. And everyone to a person on the city council endorsed openly the support for the UISD bond. We hope that the school board will do the like, especially for a project that's going to benefit here the school district and the kids of UISD that's going to be able to participate, not only from the northern part of our district, but as far south as the kids from Rio Bravo and El Cine sort of participate in the great sport. Anybody has any questions?
I'll tell you what, I'm really excited about these projects. I've visited with you two and other council members over the years about the baseball in particular, long overdue, tennis, an auditorium as well. They're all venues that will be used thoroughly by our community. We already know that. And it's a shame that it's taken as long as it has, but it's an uphill battle, and you guys have fought that battle very well. It's great that you're bringing this out for the public. The location is awesome, centrally located. We're going to have so many kids that benefit from this. I really am impressed that we got an arena and that we got a professional baseball field, but these projects are greater than that. And I think everybody in our community is going to embrace them. I think our board here needs to be completely behind it, and I think we will. We've all talked a lot about it. I think we need to really emphasize it with our staff members and everybody that they know. We need to get out the vote on this thing. This is a great move forward for Laredo. So many years, our kids have excelled in baseball and played on all kinds of venues all across the country that are spectacular, and we don't have that in Laredo. And now, we're going to have it if this succeeds, and I'm confident that it will. It's also a really neat enhancement to help Tami U, the exposure that they'll get from kids going through. That's a big deal in colleges now. I've been amazed. I went back to where I graduated. I went to A&amp;M in the summer one time with my daughter. Amazing the amount of use these facilities now have because of all the high school kids coming in there and using them. That's going to be great for Laredo. And already, as everybody probably knows, the Pony League has been quite successful. You remember, there was an example tournament right off the bat that was set up in Laredo, huge numbers, so we know that's going to do great. There's really great numbers in swimming and tennis as well. So this is a great project, and I'm excited about it, really excited. I'm excited to help you guys out on it, so I'm going to be very supportive of it myself.
I think it's been a long time coming. Everybody says Laredo doesn't have, like San Antonio or other cities. I think this will bring a lot of competition, a lot of hotel businesses, a lot of business. And I think that's what Laredo's looking for. And lots of kids, you know, they'll have a great plate. They have to go play someplace else to have a nice place, like Mr. Just said, to go play in a nice place or someplace else. I'd like for them to have their own great place to play. So I'd like to thank the city and all the city councilmen, the city manager and everybody. Thank you for your... And Texas A&amp;M, whatever we can do, thank you all.
One of the things that's important here, and I'm sure Mr. Santos will address this, but no bond money will be used for this project. This is a really neat opportunity where two governmental entities come up with creative financing to be able to do a project that benefits our community. And I think the public needs to be aware of that, that it's something that we came together and, you know, like they say, using your tax dollars at work, this is the great opportunity.
It is a tremendous opportunity to demonstrate that governmental entities can work together and achieve great things. I mean, I think there's a lot of people in the community that have been looking at that for a long time and want to see more of that. This is going to be the best ever. We just need to make sure that we rally everybody and get everybody out to vote for this thing. It's going to be a good one.
Well, I concur. With all my colleagues, I think it's something that was something well overdue, and I'm anxious for you all to get started. I hope the people all support it. And like you all were saying, I think it's something that it's beneficial because it's not going to cost us anything. No taxes are going to go up, so I think it's something that could sell. I mean, it's just working together, and I'm a hundred percent behind it. Thank you.
And another important aspect, I know because this question has come before and the people are concerned we're using the city of Laredo tax dollars, and will the average person have access to these facilities, both of them, being that they're both being built in other entities? And the answer to that is yes. We haven't ironed out the details, but I know we've talked about making an auditorium accessible, especially during the summer, and also the sports complex and the tennis courts at Tami U accessible to just the regular Laredoin out there. So those are things that we have talked about, and there's an understanding. We haven't put an exact deal to paper, but there is an understanding that that does need to happen. So the people of the Laredo District, average citizen, will be able to have access to the tennis courts, baseball fields, and auditorium. So that's a question that has happened, that has come up often, and I want to make sure I address that.
I also support it. I want to thank you for taking the initiative, seeing the illustration here, the project. It's a huge undertaking. It's more or less the same size as the current Tami U campus footprint. But I think the city is ready for such a complex. I think our children and the committee are deserving. They do need to be more active. We need to push and put emphasis on having more activities such as this. And I think one of the main things would be to make it accessible to the public in general. But again, I do support it, and just as Mr. Gelfen, I am excited for such a complex. On the auditorium, I know we've discussed it a little bit more in detail, and I also think it's something that's muchly needed at the moment right now. We have a current auditorium that's basically not serving our needs right now. So also excited for undertaking that project as well.
We need to have a before and after picture on that.
It's a great project, and it's something that really Laredo needed for years, even though Laredo has really wrapped themselves with other things that we had had in the past, from the baseballs. Mr. Santos is one of the people that really were in the baseball area, and those areas, a lot of people remember how Laredo was really active. And what we had, now the technology has advanced, and now the new projects are coming aboard, we're willing to sacrifice the best we can to really to help this with us, to bring Laredo up again on the map. We're already on the map, but still for other entities or other areas to come in and use our facilities, participate, you know? So thank you for that project that you have, to us together with the administration of the United and of course of the board. We're looking forward to keep up the good work. Thank you.
In closing, let me just cover a couple of items. I think we're extremely important, not only for the city, but I think for the school district. Number one, for the city, if you recall, two years ago, we had a band festival in Laredo. It was really a day and a half festival. We, along with the city and the county, estimated that we brought in that particular weekend over one point two million dollars to our community. That's extremely important, because I think these events and these facilities will generate that kind of monies, which obviously helps all of us. The other item on the auditorium, if you look at that, it seems that there's two swimming pools. It's really one swimming pool and one adapted swimming area. So we're able to use it for special needs, you know, seniors like me do the rowwings and so on and so forth. But it's a facility. And also for United, the other item is we plan to bring all the second graders to be able to bring them to the auditorium at least seven, eight, nine times a year to do, hopefully teach them either how to swim or how to float, you know, drown proof. And the last important item, Mr. Gonzalez is correct, these are monies of savings that the board and staff worked on to be able to generate the savings, to be able to pay for this auditorium, I mean auditorium. It's not out of our bond. I just want to make sure that the public understands that. It's not out of bond money. It's savings that we had in our budget for the last, you know, eight, ten years to look at a project like this. And again, I want to thank the city, really for parting both entities. For us, it's an entity that we needed, needed that. Our numbers have increased, and our committee's going to be able to utilize it. And again, I want to thank both of you for being here with us today.
Recognitions.
Yes, Mr. Ramirez, before we start on the final recognitions and before we get up here, tonight is really, I think, the last meeting for one of our board members, Ms. Pat Campos. Ms. Campos, under the weather, she was not able to make the date, but I think we had a little short video. And really, on behalf of staff and myself personally, I want to thank Ms. Campos for the service that she's given our district and our students for the last eleven years. So we're able to show the video, just a very brief video.
And the rest of the recognition of the board can join us up front, please.
Good evening, board members and audience. Tonight, we're here to present Betis Elementary with their distinction designation banner. These designations are awarded to campuses for outstanding achievement in specific areas. Betis Elementary for the year 2014 earned their distinctions in the top twenty-five percent, closing the gap, and also in post-secondary readiness for our students. Congratulations.
Good evening, United ISD board members, Mr. Santos, members of the audience. United Penney School District is truly excited to announce their recent prestigious distinction that has been awarded to Ms. Carmen Escamilla, the district's head librarian and librarian for John B. Alexander High School. Ms. Escamilla is one of twelve participants who were selected in a pool of five thousand entries submitted nationwide. Participants entered manuscripts which were judged by publicists and editors for Guide posts. The grand prize of these twelve participants is an all-expense-paid exclusive writers' retreat in New York City. She wrote, Ms. Escamilla wrote, a short story titled "The Sweetest Rose," a short story about loss and renewal, which will be published in Guideposts, a readership of about seven million readers. Additionally, United ISD has been very fortunate and honored that Ms. Escamilla, only employer, is United Penney School District for the last thirty-six years. Her passion for writing and firming has firmly grown every bit throughout the years, allowing her to cultivate and honor this craft. She will be traveling to New York in late October to that Guideposts Writers Retreat, which will include intensive sessions featuring editors, publicists, offering a fascinating guide to the finer points of ex-creative writing. Congratulations, Mrs. Carmen Escamilla, United ISD lead librarian for Guideposts winner.
Good evening, board members, staff members, and members of the audience. This evening, UISD would like to show its appreciation by recognizing Webb County Precinct Four Constable Harold DeValley. Aside from providing assistance with traffic control within Precinct Four this school year, Constable DeValley got an early start this summer in assisting the district to ensure a safe and successful school year. Working with KJNS, Gator Communications, and other local media, Constable DeValley kicked off his summer school safety campaign by running motorists that school was still in session. Keeping the back-to-school momentum in the summer, Constable DeValley, along with his staff, held a bucket brigade to raise funds for back-to-school supplies. In an effort to bring awareness to this awesome cause, the constable rallied the community support with community partners Gator Communication and Harley-Davidson of Laredo. The event was a success and raised two thousand dollars for UISD students. In addition, Constable DeValley launched his ABC 123 Back-to-School Safety Campaign with our UISD Police Department. This campaign has been key in reminding students and parents of the importance of essential school safety tips. Through the use of four future funds, Constable DeValley created five hundred bookmarks for this year's National Night Out that shared the ABC 123 campaign message. He even went a step further and partnered with HEB Plus, who donated books that were distributed along with the safety bookmarks to encourage reading and the district's accelerated reader program. He hopes to reach all students in Precinct Four with these bookmarks to raise safety awareness and encourage reading. Continuing to support UISD and their students, Constable DeValley held his first annual Christmas bowling tournament that was a huge success. His mission this Christmas is not only to assist the students in Precinct Four, but also to assist students countywide. He will be sharing the proceeds and making generous donations to the UISD Police Department and LISD Police Department in the very near future to aid in their Christmas campaign. Thank you, Constable Harold DeValley and his staff. Thank you, Constable Harold DeValley and his staff.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the audience. United ISD would like to recognize Michelle L. Silva, RN, family nurse practitioner, board certified, who is currently United ISD's Wellness Coordinator through the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. She provides our migrant students with free physicals, she provided our migrant students with free physicals on Saturday, August 16, 2014. Ms. Silva is a very caring and exceptional individual that is willing to give of herself for others. On behalf of the UISD School Board and the district, we would like to thank her for her dedication to our district students.
Dr. O'Toole was unable to make it tonight.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Santos, members of the audience. It is with great pride tonight that we recognize the young man, who is the current Region Five state champion, national champion, and now world powerlifting champion in the super heavyweight division in his age group. As a junior, Rudy Flotus won the state championship last year, which we recognized him for, and then upon that, he was invited to the national competition in Colleen, Texas in March, and Rudy, as well as six other members of the United South Panther Powerlifting Program, competed in the Team USA sanctioned meet, and this meet served as a qualifier for the world championships. At the nationals, Rudy broke the American squat record with a lift of 804 pounds, an American bench press record with a press of 534 pounds, and an overall record for three lifts with a total of 2,001 pounds. He became the first high school powerlifter to reach 2,000 pounds at any USA sanctioned national meet. Upon that success, Rudy was invited by Team USA Powerlifting Coach to compete at the International Powerlifting Federation World Championships in Hungary this past September. In Hungary, Rudy excelled and also won a gold medal in all events that he participated in. He squatted 705 pounds, basted 738 pounds, and deadlifted 633 pounds, for a total of 1,857 pounds. Rudy is now a senior and will be defending his championships this year. Congratulations, Rudy Flotus. Head coach for the powerlifting Panthers is Jay Ramirez, Principal Aldiana Ramirez.
That really is a tough act to follow, but this is awesome news. I mean, I'd love to be reporting about our students doing awesome. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Santos, Mr. Cruz, members of the audience. This evening, UISD would like to recognize a very special young lady who has overcome many obstacles associated with her migrant lifestyle. Several years ago, Yu Roberto Romano, director of the, for the HBO documentary, The Harvest, La Cosecha, in which Sulema and her family were featured. Sulema is asked if she had dreams, and her response was, "I have none. I'm working on those." Today, despite her late entry and early withdrawal from school to help support her family in the agricultural fields up north, Sulema is on track for graduation, and she has many accolades to her name, such as being a guest speaker at the National Association of State Directors and Migrant Education Conference, at the Midwest Association of Farm Worker Organization Conference Session Speaker, a special recognition for participating in the documentary just mentioned, Children in the Fields, a scholarship award recipient, and most recently, she garnered first place in a national essay contest sponsored by the National Association of Farm Worker Opportunity Program in Washington, DC. She was asked to attend, all expenses paid, so she could read her essay, and so that they could present her with a $500 award for first place. And I'm just going to ask you just for one, like, two minutes, because she reads fast. She has her essay with her?
Yes.
And just, just because, I, I need, she's going to read a particular paragraph.
I, well, as she said, I was asked about my dreams, and this is just a little something with what I want to do and how I want to do it. So the last paragraph, I think, of my essay. When asked about my dreams four years ago, I said I didn't have any dreams. Today, I'm proud to say that I do have dreams. My migrant council has helped me greatly to get ahead in school with the help of the migrant program at United Independent School District. As migrant students, we get support from everyone in the district, and it drives me to succeed in life. My dream is to break my family's cycle of poverty and working in the fields. I want to go to a university and be a role model to my brothers and sisters, to show my siblings that if I am able to succeed and achieve my dreams, they can as well.
I would also like to congratulate our migrant coordinator, Veronica Borgoa. Everybody knows Vero, she, her spirit, who through her efforts to make a difference in the lives of these migrant children, has many student success stories under her belt. Thank you, and can you see your presence, to make a difference in our child's, in our children's life? Thank you very much, Vero, and congratulations. And this isn't in the script, but a recruiter for Michigan State University is coming down personally to recruit Sulema to attend Michigan State University next year.
Item six, this time we move on to the consent agenda items.
Mr. Vice President, the Business and Instructional Committee met last week on Tuesday, October the 7th. I make a motion for approval, let me see here, from A through H, A through H.
A second.
There's motion, the second. Also, any questions?
Mr. Vice President, if I may, on the consent agenda, six F, there's one additional discretionary fund request that I'd like the Board of Trustees to approve at this time. It's a request from our Health Services Department, Ms. Irene Rosales, requesting funds to send seven nurses to the Texas School Nurses Organization Conference. And this request is to be split funded, with $1,000 coming from Ms. Pat Campos, $1,500 coming from Mr. Rick Rodriguez, and $2,000 coming from Mr. Ramiro Villas III. Would ask that the board approve that, this request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions, any comments? All those in favor? Item passes. Agenda item seven, items for individual, items for individual consideration. Item seven A, approval of board minutes for the month of September 2014. Is there a motion regarding approval of board minutes for the month of August 2014, as presented?
Second. Give me the motion, I'll second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Item B, approval of donations?
Yes, Mr. Meadows, members of the board, it is recommended that the Board Trustees graciously, graciously accept the following donations, and they will be attached to the minutes. We have four donations over $1,000. Newman Elementary received a donation of $5,000 from BP Newman Investment Company to be used for the library books. Alexander High School Student Activity Club received a donation of $4,000 from Eloy Indonesia Rodriguez. Salinas Elementary School Cheerleaders received a donation of $1,062 from Salinas Elementary Cheer Parents. And United South High School Building Trades Club received a donation of $1,969.25 from Lifedown Youth Activity. And we have three other donations under $1,000 in this month. We received donations of $13,271.25 that we graciously accept, and want to thank these parents and clubs for helping our campuses and our students.
Is there a motion regarding, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Item B, approval of donation, oh, okay. Item seventy, approval of organization resulting from the policy review session due July 15, 16, to any fourteen?
I don't know if anybody has any questions. I know Mr. Don, Eric Bedeck, I don't know.
Any questions? Their motion regarding approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Item number eight, closed session, the time is now 6:49, and the board will adjourn into closed session pursuant to sections 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Court to discuss agenda items eight, A and B. We will leave back in about an hour. We, we convene, item nine, we convene the closed session, the time is 7:32 PM, and the board will take appropriate action when items necessary are discussed in closed session.
Shout out to members of the board, the recommendation is to dismiss cost number 2014 CV 7,707 D4, United ISD versus KRK Limited and KCOM Managers LLC, currently pending in the 406 Judicial District Court of Webb County, Texas, as discussed in closed session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
There's no recommendation on agenda item B, as it was not heard by the school board tonight.
Motion regarding the...
Action on item B is nothing.
Yes, no action on...
No action?
Yeah, it's just adjournment at this point.
Motion to adjourn. Any motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes. Everybody can go home, or before they go home, there's plenty of food over there.
It's a...
The time is 7:33.